Good morning, everyone. This is Val Arco, Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, and I am pleased to call to order the May 20, 2021, meeting of the Montgomery County Board. Note the presence of all three commissioners, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I will open this morning with some comments about the coronavirus. So first of all, we have some really great news. Our positivity rate has now dropped to below 5% this week. That's our 14-day average rate. It's now down to 4.28%. So this means that we have finally gotten back to suppression of this virus in our community here in Montgomery County. And I think it's definitely a reflection of more members of our community getting vaccinated. So all good news. In terms of our current vaccination status for the county, 56.8% of the population has at least one dose. If you look at the eligible population, which is 12, age 12 and up, we have 65.4% of the eligible population with at least one dose. And if we look at our seniors over 65, we have 98.7% of individuals 65 and over with at least one dose. In terms of being fully vaccinated, so that means one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson or both doses of either Pfizer or Moderna. We've got 30.8% of our entire population fully vaccinated. If we look at the eligible population, which is 12 years of age and older, it's 35.4% of the eligible population. And of the 65 and up, it is 50.6% of our seniors. So again, really great news. We're making fantastic progress. Our county office of public health and Department of Public Safety have now given collectively 97,473 first- or single doses, in the case of J&amp;J, and 74,805 second doses. Our efforts to reach as many of our residents about the benefits of getting vaccinated continue. Despite the high percentage of people who have received at least one dose, we know there are still people who may be hesitant or who are waiting for other reasons. Our message to everyone is to get vaccinated today. It's easy to get an appointment. It doesn't cost you anything, and it will help protect you and your family. We all want to get back to doing the things we love, and getting vaccinated is the quickest way to do that. This week, a postcard encouraging people to get vaccinated has been mailed to all Montgomery County households. This is just one of the ways we're making sure that no one in our community gets left behind. We also continue to work with our partners and our schools to provide educational materials to parents on the COVID-19 vaccine now that the Pfizer vaccine is approved for adolescents aged 12 to 15. Next Thursday, May 27, we will hold a virtual town hall for parents, where a panel of area pediatricians and healthcare experts will answer questions about the safety and effectiveness of the Pfizer vaccine in adolescents and discuss why it's so important to immunize our children. To register for this town hall, you can visit www.montcopa.org/register. Montgomery County Office of Public Health is currently administering Pfizer vaccine for those aged 12 and older, and the Johnson &amp; Johnson or Janssen vaccine for those aged 18 and older. As a reminder, anyone under the age of 18 coming to get their vaccine must be accompanied by a parent or guardian. While walk-ups to our clinics are available, we do recommend that people make an appointment on our website to speed up the onsite registration process. Registration can be accessed by visiting vaccine.montcopa.org. Anyone who books with us will have the ability to choose their clinic location, the date and time of their appointment, and the vaccine they receive. Starting this week, we are offering Johnson &amp; Johnson and Pfizer at all of our clinics except for one. This is so that we can continue to give people the most choice for the vaccine that they would like to receive. We are offering evening and Saturday hours at all of our vaccine clinics. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, the clinics are open until 6:15 p.m. for anyone who would like to get vaccinated after school or work. I'm also happy to share that we're expanding access to second doses for anyone who needs one. This includes college students who may be coming home from school before they were able to get their second shot. Our vaccine registration now has an option for people to register for their second dose only, their second shot only. To do this, you can visit our vaccine registration page at vaccine.montcopa.org and select "Start Registration" to register for an appointment. When prompted, click "Yes" to indicate you have received your first dose, and it will take you through the regular questions to schedule a second-dose appointment. As a reminder, if you or family member have any appointment issues, you can email covid19@montcopa.org, or you can call our hotline at 833-875-3967. I also want to provide an update on our COVID-19 rent and utility assistance program. As of this week, the county has distributed more than $11 million in emergency rent and utility assistance to 1,956 households in Montgomery County. We know that there are many people still feeling the economic impacts of COVID-19. I encourage anyone who's unable to pay their rent or utility bills to reach out. The program is available to help anyone facing financial impacts of COVID-19 who lives in Montgomery County. We are working with six area nonprofits to process applications, which is why we've been able to disburse $11 million in just two months. If you or someone you know would like to reach out to the nonprofits directly to learn more about the program, please do. The six organizations are Aklamo, Family Services of Montgomery County, Manna on Main Street, the YWCA of the tri-county area, CADCOM, and the Pottstown Cluster of Religious Communities. You can learn more about the program or see if you are eligible You can also call 211. So that's pretty simple, just dial 211. Or you can text your ZIP code to 898211. And again, you can text your ZIP code to 898211. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lawrence.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. First, I want to give an update on our primary election from May 18. We had a very smooth and uneventful election on the 18th. Voters used several options to cast their ballot. 75,657 mail-in ballots were mailed, and 56,753 mail-in ballots were received back, so about 75%. And 106,000 ballots were cast in person. And we still have provisional military and overseas ballots pending. So that means that 27% of our registered voters participated in this election, which is down from November, where we had over 80%, but I believe it is up from our midterm election in 2017. All election results can be found at www.montcopa.org/voter services. So I want to thank all of the poll workers, ballot canvassers, and election night assistants who worked during this election, you know, before the election and then on Election Day and through the night to make sure we have the results in. Our democracy only works when people get involved, and we aren't able to hold free and fair, secure elections without your help. So we invite all members of our community who are interested in taking a bigger role in our elections to contact us on our website to learn more about available opportunities. And I want to thank everyone who ran and congratulate those who won. But to get into the arena, to step forward, to serve your committee, win or lose, I commend all of you. And now I want to give a final update on our MoncoStrong 2021 Pennsylvania Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. Since the COVID-19 pandemic began, the county has helped to award over $35 million in grant relief funds to small businesses and nonprofits across several industries. This includes the recent awards for the MoncoStrong 2021 Pennsylvania Hospitality Industry Recovery Program, which wrapped up last week. Last Thursday, the Redevelopment Authority voted to approve the final round of 113 grants for a total of 357 awards. Of the $9,411,247 allocated for this program, $9,290,000 went towards the awards, and $121,000 covered the cost of administration of the program. The demographic breakdown of the 357 awardees, 50 of our municipalities had a business that were given an award. 32% of the applications are from a self-identified minority-owned business. 34% of the applications are from a self-identified woman-owned business. And 4% of our applications are from a self-identified veteran-owned business. The complete list of awardees are posted on the Commerce Department's site at www.montcopa.org/commerce. I want to thank the staff of our Commerce Department for this and doing this in partnership with the Redevelopment Authority. I thank their staff and their board as well. And that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. I also just want to thank everyone in voter services for just a fantastic job on Tuesday. Everything seemed to go so smoothly, and there's so much that goes on behind the scenes to make that happen. So I just want to thank all of them, and of course, all the individuals that volunteered to work at our polls. As Commissioner Lawrence said, we absolutely could not do this without you. So thank you so much. Commissioner Gail, do you have any comments?
Good morning, everyone. I too would like to thank all our poll workers. We have a very large county with many voting precincts and requires a lot of individuals to work on Election Day. And I'm proud of the staff and the volunteers that made the election go smooth this year. Thank you.
All right, then we will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Ms. Francisco, do we have anyone who wishes to comment on the agenda items today?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Mr. Stein, do you want to go ahead and read the rules then, please?
Certainly. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the commissioners for consideration or which may come before the commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether matters germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Profane, slanderous, or discriminatory language or comments will not be tolerated in accordance with the county's nondiscrimination policy. Time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. Board is not required to respond to questions or comments during the meeting, so the public is reminded that this is not an opportunity for questions and answers. Board chair may direct county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including, but not limited to, interruptions or attempting to interrupt speakers or yell out in any way, including arguing whether matters germane to county business after the solicitor has made a determination of such or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and been requested to wrap up, shall be grounds for muting or removal from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. As always, commissioners, welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback at commissioners@montcopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, so we will start with comment on matters on today's agenda. Ms. Francisco?
Thank you. Our first commenter is Laura Lehman. You are now unmuted.
Hi, commissioners. So I cannot tell you, you know, what it's like to hear Mr. Stein talk for almost two minutes every meeting to tell us what the rules are. This applies to every agenda item. First of all, two minutes is too short if you're speaking on more than one item. So please, the sunshine laws allow reasonable time to speak. You're in violation of that if someone has more than one item to speak on. And number two, Mr. Stein's rules about what's germane to the topics, and it's all his choice. You've been told before that this is a complete violation of the sunshine laws, where we are allowed at any time to interrupt the meeting for perceived sunshine violations and to explain to you what our perceived violation is. So that would be completely, that you can't argue with him, that he can say, "Your comment is not germane," and nobody can argue with him? That's a violation of the sunshine laws, and it's unnecessary. You have literally over 800,000 people in a $400 million budget, and you are giving no time at all to residents and have discouraged them from even coming. If we were not zooming, it would take me close to an hour and a half or two hours to attend a meeting, and you would allow me two minutes? I mean, this is, you know, there's something wrong here. You need to consider the people that you're serving. And the thing, the rules that you have should be rules that you're pretty sure the people you're serving would be in agreement of or with because you are representing them. So please correct those things. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Francisco, is there anyone else for matters on the agenda?
We have a few others. So now we will move to Jennifer Henderson. You are now unmuted.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Henderson. I'm on Ambler Borough Council. I'm part of Ambler's Community Gardens Stair Committee, and I'm calling about the 2040 grant. First of all, I'd like to say thank you all for considering our grant, and I would like to say that majority of the residents in Ambler are in support of our garden. Our Stair Committee has worked hard to engage the community. We have worked hard to address any concerns residents may have. Our garden is for the community, by the community. We have a great group of women who are working hard and are committed to see this project go through. Through our community outreach, we have formed lots of relationships with individuals that will only help our garden to become successful. We live in an area that suffers from food insecurity, and I know that's hard to believe because it's Ambler Borough, but where this garden is located will help the people who do not have access to good, quality food. We have also partnered with Weaver's Way for Community Refrigerator that it's been up and running since last week, and I have put stuff in two days in a row, and it's fully being used. With the help of our community garden, we can make sure that our residents in Ambler have access to quality, fresh food that we all deserve and need. And I thank you for taking the time out to listen to me and taking the time out to consider our grant, and I hope that Ambler's garden can be successful. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. We appreciate your comments. Ms. Francisco, who's next?
We have Erin McKenna Endicott. You are now unmuted.
Hi, commissioners. This is Erin Endicott. I'm also an Ambler Borough Council member. I too have been working with Jen Henderson on the steering committee to help launch the Ambler Community Garden. We have been working since last June. This has been on our agenda, on Borough Council's agenda, since last June, and we have been working with the community to get their input and recruit members to help join our steering committee. We are so excited now that the weather is nicer and the COVID rates are lower that we're able to finally meet with the community in person for the last, since March, the first day of spring. We've been having two meetings a month with the community. We've scheduled personal meetings set aside for just the immediate neighbors who would be most impacted by the addition to the park. We've formed great relationships and met community members from all around the immediate area and beyond, and who are all very excited and can't wait to partner and help the borough launch this great project. So receiving the Monco2040 grant would really support the community members to make this vision a reality. So thank you for considering this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Endicott. We appreciate your comments. All right, Ms. Francisco?
That concludes that section of public comment.
Okay. Then we will move on to general public comments.
Okay. We have one person with their hand raised. We will go to Laura Lehman. You are now unmuted.
Hi again, commissioners. As you know, I have been asking to have a meeting with you to discuss this so it didn't have to be discussed in this format. And it's a shame that it does, that we can't get any further than that. So first of all, I'd like to have a conversation across this county. For anybody who's listening, I'm a citizen of Abington, and I have a website called abingtoncitizens.com. They can find me there. And I would like to have a discussion, hopefully, with the board included as to why three commissioners for 800,000 people is sufficient. One of them is rendered two to one out on every vote, and the other two, one is the lead dog and the other one follows. And so basically, we have a county that's led by one person with another person always in agreement. So that needs to change. If I came to you and I said I had a 50-50 lot and wanted to put a 12-story building on it, I would be ushered in the door very quickly. I have very little doubt, okay? But I'm not. I'm coming to you saying that your planning commission has major problems, and the way they are developing our communities in violation to our laws and with lies and deceptions to the residents that they're supposed to be serving is problematic. And all through this county, the overdevelopment is causing amazing problems with residents that they start from the beginning and can't figure out how to address. I would like that addressed. Your planning commissioner, the chair of your board, was under investigation for violations of exactly what he is now in charge of by you. And that needs to change. I see my time--
Lehman, your time is up.
I see my time is up, but I have asked you for a meeting. Please--
Thank you, Ms. Lehman.
Please allow one.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. Ms. Francisco, anyone else?
That concludes our public comment.
All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move that the, I will move to approve the May 6, 2021, minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we have a number of announcements and presentations today. We are going to start with National Nurses Week, which was actually May 6 through 12. So we're doing a little bit of a retrospective here this morning. And we have Ruth Cole from our Division of Clinical Services in our Office of Public Health. And this is a group of people that has been working very, very hard for the last 15 months. So Ruth, it's great to see you.
Yes, well, thank you so much for highlighting the public health nurses. I was just asked to talk a little bit about what our nurses have been doing over the last many months. And I just want to first say that that saying, "It takes all of us," it could never be more true. So the things I'm going to highlight have certainly been done in partnership with many of our, you know, outside of the county, but within the county, our partnerships have gotten more and more robust. I'm just happy to just acknowledge the support that the commissioners have given, the Human Resources, Office of Communications, you know, our sister agency, the Department of Public Safety. But even within the Office of Public Health, we have just been so integrated more than ever. It's been really a pleasure to work as a true team. Our Public Health Emergency Preparedness, Megan Young is that coordinator. She's been spearheading a lot of the initiatives. Michelle Masters in the Division of Communicable Disease. All of us really have been working together. But that being said, across, you know, the globe, nurses have been on the front lines of the pandemic. And it's been true as well in our Office of Public Health. And everything from, you know, assisting in outbreak management over the phone, on the hotline. But the biggest thing, the nurses have been asked to go into the field. And, you know, I just want to highlight that, you know, when we asked our residents to stay home, stay safe, we asked our nurses to put on Tyvek suits and participate in the first drive-through COVID test site when we had our outbreak. Among the first responders, the nurses were there, out in the field, and continued to assist with our, you know, when the National Guard was on site. And then when we decentralized to the sites, testing sites around the county, the nurses were there, helping to get those up and running. Of course, with our vaccination efforts, we're now over 177,000 doses that we've administered at our mass vaccination sites, and the nurses have been overseeing that operation. But the other thing was when there was the terrible outbreaks within the long-term care facilities early on, the nurses participated in the FAST teams, the Field Assessment Strike Teams, where we asked them to put under 95 and 95 masks and PPE and go into the hot zones, into the COVID units in those long-term care facilities, which were really, you know, faced with some dreadful situations. They did infection control assessments, tried to match them with some resources for unmet needs. So they have really been out and about, serving the county, taking on every challenge. And it's really been, you know, I'd say, you know, a difficult and challenging, but satisfying year to be working in public health as nurses here in the county.
Well, Ruth, thank you so much. You and your team have been just incredible and on the receiving end of so many requests to just keep doing more. I don't think we've ever said you can stop doing something this year. We just keep adding on the tasks. And so, and we've had so many situations where you've had to quickly pivot and change direction. And we just really, really appreciate that. You've provided incredible service to the people who live in this community. And you are all unsung heroes in my book for the incredible work that you've done throughout this past year. Commissioner Lawrence, do you have any comments?
Yes, Ruth. It's amazing what you all have done over the past year, just simply amazing. From day one, from setting up testing sites to vaccine clinics, as you mentioned, going into the long-term care facilities. And as Commissioner Arco mentioned, every time we asked you all to do something more, we didn't take something away. We added on, if you all complained, I never heard it. We added on, if you all complained, I never heard it. You all just kept doing it and you continue to do it. So thank you for what you've done over the past year. And thank you for being here, representing all of the nurses, our public health nurses, but nurses across Montgomery County. You all get a week, but you deserve a year. So thank you all for what you've done to keep us safe and healthy during this past year.
Commissioner Gao.
Ruth, I would also like to thank you for joining our meeting today. I'm so proud of all your hard work and dedication with serving the residents of Montgomery County. And please express my gratitude to all your colleagues. As mentioned by my colleagues on the board, everyone worked so hard over the last year. We're proud of all your hard work. We're grateful of it. And I'm happy that we have a week like this week to recognize all that hard work. So continue to do what you're doing. It's a great service to our constituents. And anything we can do to support you in that role, please don't hesitate to contact us. Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you.
And one last comment, Ruth, to share with the team, because I haven't had a chance to send you these. But I have gotten so many text messages and emails from moms who are just so appreciative of the way in which the nursing team has been vaccinating their kids. They talk about how kind everyone is, how patient they are with kids that are nervous about getting an injection. And they just rave and rave. So please share that with everyone. There's a lot of grateful parents out there right now. So thank you. Yeah. Okay, next we have National Corrections Officers and Employees Week, which was earlier this month as well. And this morning, we have Sean McGee, our Warden at the Montgomery County Correctional Facility. Warden McGee, you are up.
Good morning. So the Montgomery County Correctional Facility is a 2080-bed facility. Today's in-house population is 824. And the reason why I mention this is this without the assistance of this board and the assistance and support of this board, the Board of Judges and the Courts, the Prison Board of Inspectors, the Health Department, the Department of Public Safety, Prime Care Medical, our medical vendor, and all the other county agencies that have assisted us during this past year have really, are the main reasons why I'm discussing or how we're mitigating COVID-19 in the facility. During this past year, we've done four testing sessions with the inmate population and the staff. During 2020, total of 6,516 tests conducted on the inmate population, which resulted in 480 positive results. Today, what we're seeing with the inmate population is new commitments. Anybody coming into the facility, they're either testing a positive as soon as they're committed to the facility or are on their second test. So what we're doing is we're doing a series of three testing sessions with the inmate population prior to them even moving out to general population. So during the 21-day process, they're tested when they come in, they're tested after 14 days, and then upon, upon, they're tested when they come in, they get a confirmation PCR test, and then on the 14th day, they receive another test. And then as long as everything is negative, then that will move them out to general population housing. Staffing, testing with the staff is pretty much done. We've lined all the testing along with the inmate population. Total of 2,850 tests have been conducted on the staff, resulting in 171 positive results. We are rapid antigen testing the staff on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, depending on their schedules. What we've also done is we just completed an eight-month project to clean the vents or the ductwork throughout the facility. And again, with our in-house population, 824 inmates, we wouldn't be able to move inmates around if we didn't have those low numbers. We've also replaced some HVAC rooftop units over 2020 and earlier this year. And now what we're starting to do is vaccines, vaccinating the staff and the inmate population. And obviously, continuous cleaning efforts continue to go on throughout the facility as well. We've been educating the staff and the inmates. To date, we have about 227 staff members that are fully vaccinated. That's 186 correctional staff, along with 41 prime care staff members. We've done several vaccine clinics that where we partner with Einstein Montgomery Hospital. And of course, the Department of Public Safety, they've done a couple vaccine clinics onsite as well. We continue to educate the inmates. On May 11, we held our first vaccine clinic with the inmate population. It was a low number, about 20% or 167 inmates that took advantage of the vaccine. But our hopes is, you know, to continue to educate and talk to the, to the population in order to promote the vaccine, or at least offer the vaccine at any time. So they may request it at any time during their commitment or their incarceration with us. Finally, I'd really like to say, none of this could be done without the correctional staff. I mean, they're here every day, accepting new challenges and working on a daily basis in hopes that we return to some type of normal operation. And without their, their hard work and efforts, we really could not do what we're doing today. So, thank you.
Well, Warden, thank you so much. Your team has really been in the thick of it over this year. Also, a team that's had to step up, change a lot of policies and protocols, and also pivot from time to time as guidance changed. And, you know, just it's been a constantly evolving situation. But really appreciate the work that you have all done to keep individuals in the correctional facility as safe as possible. Obviously, we've worked, the courts have worked very hard to depopulate the correctional facility as much as they could, which has clearly helped. But, but for the individuals that are there, I know that there's just been tremendous effort to keep everybody safe. So I just want to thank you for that and keep up, you know, keep up this really solid work. Commissioner Lawrence?
Warden McGee, of course, you were there before, but I do want to commend you personally because you stepped up into leadership to become the Warden during the pandemic. And it was a seamless transition. And we were very fortunate that we had you there in place to continue the efforts. I want to thank your correctional officers. They were not able to stay home when many were staying home. They had to be there. They had to do their job, and they've done it well. And your whole team has worked to protect not only our employees, but our citizens who were there as well. So want to thank you for everything that you've done for the past year, and please express our gratitude to the entire staff.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gao.
Warden McGee, thank you for joining us this morning. I truly admire your leadership and your years of service to Montgomery County at the correctional facility. And I'm very proud of the correctional workers. I know the duties of a correctional officer are often very challenging and can be very stressful. And I want them to know that they're not forgotten, even though we don't see them on a daily basis. They're a critical member of the county staff that delivers a critical service. And please let them know that the Board of Commissioners is very proud of what they do each and every day to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warden. Have a great day. All right, next, Memorial Day is almost here. And with an update, we have Dennis Miller, Director of Veterans Affairs. Mr. Miller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dennis Miller, Office of Veteran Affairs. Well, you already said that, but I'll recap it. The Memorial Day is a somber holiday by design, but I do have a couple of exciting things to pass regarding the holiday. And I have a couple of slides that I'm going to put up. And a couple of things to put in the chat just to keep everyone on the same page. I'm going to share a screen right now. There we go. And there it is. First one would be veteran grave flag placement. We have a lot of them going on this weekend and next weekend. Like it says on the slide here, we encourage you to participate and be safe about it. These are outdoor activities. Well, social distancing is kind of built into it anyway. If you go to our website, I'm going to show you what that looks like here. If you go to our Montgomery County PA Veterans Affairs website, there's a link to the left that says Cemetery Map. And you'll notice Map of the County with our cemeteries. There are over 60 organizations that are participating this weekend to cover 290 cemeteries. Now, there are blue dots and red dots on here. The red dots wouldn't be the ones that you could volunteer for. The blue dots, you can. If you click or hover on one of those dots, when you get to this map, you'll notice that the Cemetery Caretaker Organization is listed. This is for Green Lawn Cemetery in North Wales, as an example. You can contact the person there and tell them you want to get involved and you want to help with flag placements. A lot of these organizations would love to have you. Not all veterans of the past are buried in Montgomery County. Some are not interred, some were elsewhere. But in our registry, we have over 77,000 veterans listed. On May 28, we're going to be placing 77 flags on the courthouse lawn, same as we did last year. It looks wonderful. It's, each flag represents 1,000 deceased veterans, you know, that we have a record of. Also, this year, we're going to have the 2021 Virtual Memorial Day Tribute. This one is going to be a little different from last year. Last year, anyone that submitted, we would put it up. We didn't get a lot of submissions this year, but we did have another project going on. As you know, the Montgomery County Vietnam Veteran Memorial is taken down for now because of the construction. It's going to be replaced later on. But what we did is we looked at the names that were on that list, and we found pictures of most of those veterans that were on there. And we put together an eight-minute video. This is something that you wouldn't get from the memorial right there by the courthouse. But we asked that you watch the video, listen to the music, and remember them. And that is the, that is the, I'm going to put the link on the chat in a second that'll have this. Also, lastly, we say this every Veterans Day as well, but for us in our office, every day is Memorial Day and every day is Veterans Day. We don't lose a veteran focus, not for a second. We ask you to follow us on Facebook and Instagram under the Department of Health and Human Services. We give a monthly update on YouTube to let you know what's going on and how to get involved. And also, we ask you, and there's a couple of numbers down there, to please refer to us, veterans and surviving spouses that are in need of services, homeless, at risk of suicide, advanced age and crisis. It runs the gamut. But we have a phone number there. That's our office cellphone number, which is the only number we're using for the last year. So we really want you to get a live person when you call. And we have a general email, teamveterans@moncopa.org. But refer yourself, a neighbor, a relative, something like that. We have a lot of programs that we could facilitate out there to help. And as far, the other thing about helping is, like I said, Memorial Day is a somber type of a holiday. And if, how do I say this? It's a very somber holiday, and we want you to have a peaceful and reflectful, reflective Memorial Day and recognize that for a lot of us veterans, we're remembering our fallen comrades. And just keep that in mind and be kind to each other like you would any other day. Thank you.
Dennis, thank you so much. Your office has done a phenomenal job throughout this year of staying in touch with veterans and working around restrictions, both last year and now this year, where they're much less thankfully, to continue to honor our veterans in the most respectful way. I'm so pleased to hear what you're doing around the Vietnam Memorial. Obviously, it saddened all of us to have to take those memorials down for construction. But they will be back, absolutely. They're in very, very safe storage. And I think this is a wonderful way to acknowledge the individuals whose names are on that memorial. And we can connect with them in a little bit different way this year. So thank you for being so creative with that. And for people that don't know, for those that have never reached out to this office, they do a phenomenal job of connecting veterans with benefits that that veteran has earned. And so, you know, this is, there's so many programs available to veterans because of their service. And so if you're a veteran and you've never checked into what might be there for you, I really urge you to do that. So Dennis, thank you so much for your service and for the service that your office provides to veterans across this county every single day. And with that, I'll turn over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Mr. Miller, thank you for your service to our country, but thank you for your service to our veterans here in Montgomery County. You've done an excellent job in running the office and making sure, reaching out to our veterans to make sure that they get the services that they've earned. And thank you for all your hard work in planning Memorial Day. Thank you for your words to remind us to be kind and remind us that for some of our veterans, it can be a very tough day as they remember their fallen brothers and sisters. So I commend you for all you do, and thank you.
Mr. Gao.
Dennis, thank you for joining us. I look forward to displaying flags this Memorial Day. I did so last year. I had a great time connecting with so many people that want to honor our fallen heroes. It's a great tribute to all of them, and thank you for your leadership on this. Last year, I raised money out of private charity to supply the flags. And I know they were very grateful to make sure that these fallen heroes were honored. And it's great that we have the ability to do it this year. And I'd also like to thank you, as my colleagues mentioned, for all the great outreach that's being done to connect with the veteran community. I often hear from veterans that have served that find it difficult to navigate what benefits and resources are available to them. So things like the MOCO Veterans Hotline is a useful tool for them to use, and it's nice that we have the ability to promote that. So thank you, Dennis, for your leadership and continue the great work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, and our last commemoration is for Foster Care Month, which is the entire month of May. And for that, we have Roberto Duarte, our Administrator for the Office of Children and Youth. Mr. Duarte.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, County Commissioners, and thank you for inviting us this morning. As you know, May is National Foster Care Month. And I want to take some time this morning to honor the contributions of many people who have, who provide support, protection, and a nurturing environment for children in need, our foster parents. More importantly, I want to highlight the value and compassion of our foster parents who make a real and lasting impact in the lives of children and families. Every day, foster parents ensure that children receive the support and care they need during very difficult times in their lives. When children cannot be reunited with their birth families, our foster parents frequently provide permanent and loving homes through adoption and permanent legal custodianship. Today, the Office of Children and Youth has 246 children residing in foster care. About 154 of those children reside in a traditional foster home, while 92 of those children reside in a kinship foster home. The Office of Children and Youth currently has 104 general foster homes and 45 kinship foster homes. And we also contract with about 37 foster care provider agencies. In spite of the many challenges we have faced over the past year, in 2020, we received 94 inquiries from prospective new foster parents. And we approved 60 A new foster homes, which represents a combination of general foster homes and kinship foster homes. OCY, at OCY, we are always working on expanding our number of foster homes to meet the needs of sibling groups, older youth, children who require a more intensive level of care, and the needs of culturally and diverse children. We can all agree that the past year, we have all faced unprecedented challenges as a result of the pandemic. That, however, has not deterred the commitment and dedication of our foster parents. Throughout the pandemic, our children and families have continued to receive quality services. Our foster parents have continued to open their homes and their hearts to children in need. Our foster parents have exercised significant flexibility to meet the needs of birth families. Also, our foster parents recruitment efforts have continued to thrive in spite of the pandemic. Unfortunately, during the peak of the pandemic, birth parents were unable to see their children in person. And our foster parents adapted very quickly to new ways of connecting children with their birth parents, while also ensuring that their educational and medical needs were being met, among other things. Finally, I want to ask county residents to consider becoming foster parents so that we may continue to provide nurturing and loving homes to vulnerable children. As always, we happily welcome opportunities to discuss our foster care program with interested individuals, and they may contact the Office of Children and Youth. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Duarte, thank you so much. And again, just another team of people that have done extraordinary work during this pandemic, finding new ways to provide these absolutely critical services to people here in our county. And I'm just so grateful for the work that you're doing and of course, the work that all the foster families are doing, whether they're kinship or a more- whether they're kinship or a more traditional foster family. Um I'm I'm sure that that all took on uh just an heightened urgency during this pandemic and you know, people probably felt like they were taking maybe a little bit more risks than they would typically without the overlay of the pandemic. So I just want to thank everyone, these services are so important to these children to help them get off to the best start possible uh for their lives and the commitment and the dedication to this work that your office shows really knows no bound. And and I just want to thank you and your entire team for the work that you've been doing. And I'm sorry, we always have a picnic every spring and we bring folks together to celebrate, it's just a shame we can't do this, but next year, definitely next year, we'll be able to do this in person, so. All right, Commissioner Lawrence.
Roberto, uh the Office of Children and Youth has done exemplary work during this past year uh under very difficult circumstances, so I thank you for that, I thank your team. Um and I want to thank all the foster parents, um even before the pandemic, but as you noted, it could be even more difficult during this pandemic. Um I have several friends who have been foster parents and have shared what how it's changed their lives um and the relationships they made. So I would join you in encouraging anyone who's interested uh to contact the Office of Children and Youth and and find out more about becoming a foster parent. But thank you Roberto for being here today and for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gao.
Thank you for the presentation, Roberto, I too would like to encourage families across Montgomery County to consider uh becoming a foster care parent. I, in my personal life, am a strong advocate for adoption and foster care and they are by far some of the kindest, most caring people you'll ever come across. And as you mentioned, Roberto, they certainly do open up their hearts and their homes to these children that are in need and it's a very critical and much needed service in Montgomery County. And I'd like to thank all the staff in the Office of Children and Youth that helped connect these children with foster care parents. They do an excellent job and we need more of it, so thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. All right, now we're going to move on to something that I certainly look forward to every year, which is to learn uh which of our municipalities are going to be the recipients of our Mako twenty forty grants. So to uh get us all up to speed, we have Scott France, Director of the Planning Commission and some of his team. Mr. France.
Thank you Commissioner Arkush and good morning Commissioners. Uh we're very happy to be here, this has become one of the favorite days of my year uh when we get to share in public uh the announcements for which projects are are recommended for funding in the Mako twenty forty Implementation Grant Program. Uh for those who don't know, this is a grant program uh that the county has sponsored since two thousand sixteen and it provides uh funding for projects that originate on the local level submitted by municipalities that achieve or address the goals of the county's comprehensive plan. So working together, uh we're able to provide uh funding that helps uh many residents uh and addresses the county's uh goals. Uh Anne is putting up our presentation and in a moment, I'll hand it over to her to give you all the, all the details and what what everyone wants to hear, uh which projects are being funded. Um but just a quick uh overview for those not familiar with the program. Uh we have two point five million dollars allotted to the program this year and that's through the capital budget. It's a competitive process that began uh at the beginning of the year, I believe, applications were due on March first and since that time, a uh a grant review committee has been going through the uh projects and scoring them and making recommendations. That committee is made up by MCPC board members, uh chaired this year by our Vice Chair Dulcie Flaherty, also including Stephen Klein, Jill Blumhardt and Charlie Tronetta. The committee also includes interdepartmental leaders from the Commerce Department, Housing and Community Development and the Solicitors Office, as well as MCPC staff, our Planning Commission staff. The committee uses a set of project evaluation criteria, which first off includes the impact of a project. And I just wanted to note that this year, we did make a conscious effort and put into the guidelines that there was an increased focus and acknowledgement towards projects that address issues of social equity and inclusion, both in the planning process for projects as well as uh the communities that they impact with the uh uh implementation of the project. And that was something that was always considered in past rounds, but we really wanted to heighten the acknowledgement and and ask the applicants to specifically address those issues uh for the benefit, benefit of our review committee. The only municipalities may apply for these uh applicant, project applications, but they can partner with private or nonprofit organizations and sometimes do in the past. And again, this has to address a goal of the the Mako twenty forty program, we do have focus categories and annual uh review those. The maximum grant amount for any award is two hundred thousand dollars, but we really do see a range. Uh I believe the minimum is ten thousand dollars and generally, the average comes out a little over a hundred thousand uh per grant each year. The minimum local match municipalities or or other sources are required to provide twenty percent of the grant amount at minimum. Some projects uh include greater amounts of local funding or additional funding. We always try to leverage uh the amount of money that goes into a project from other sources as well. So for the past five years, and yes, it's amazing to think this program has been going strong for five years now, or this is the sixth year. Uh we've had a hundred and twenty applications received up to this point and seventy two grants were awarded prior to this year for a total of seven point seven million, and again, that average has been a hundred and nine thousand. And the last point I want to make, uh before we hand it over, if I can advance the slide. Uh this is a map showing where projects have gone and uh and and then the numbers of projects in some cases. And we're really proud of the fact that this program has really reached all corners of the county and all all areas. While we don't have every municipality that has had a grant or applied for a grant yet, that is always our goal. And we're happy, very happy to announce uh, and I'll give you the specifics, but we have three municipalities that are white on this map that did not receive a grant before and they are now recei- uh recommended to receive a grant this year. Another four municipalities that may have been part of a regional application or a regional project that was funded in the past, but this year are receiving their first project that is uh a sole project within their municipality. So all in all, we see it as as seven brand new participants in terms of municipalities and that's very exciting and um again, it's one of the major points of pride that we want, we want this program to uh affect as many residents throughout the county as possible. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Anne.
Good morning, everyone, um so this year in twenty twenty one, we received thirty one applications for projects uh for a total of just over four million in funds requested. Uh again, uh Scott already mentioned that we have about two and a half million. Uh we, we, I think, almost always get more requests than we have money to grant. We're recommending twenty three projects for funding this year, the average award comes to just over one hundred twelve thousand dollars. A handful of projects are resubmissions um with with definite significant application improvements in those cases. We have three focus areas that that we take a closer look at, projects that fit into our walk or bike Mako plans. Those are always very popular. We have a focus area of supporting downtowns and community destinations as well as adaptation and resiliency. Those are projects that address uh things like infrastructure upgrades or stormwater management. So if you do the math, that means that eight projects are not being recommended for funding at this time. Not that they're bad projects, but some municipalities submit two applications, we are only funding one per municipality, those are the the program's rules. Um and other projects just aren't quite ready to go and we hope that they are able to uh come back as resubmissions next year. So uh first up, and these are in alphabetical order by municipality, which puts us at Ambler. Ambler Borough is uh recommended to receive funding for the Night Park Community Garden uh for forty three thousand dollars. But uh as you already heard, Ambler is in the beginning stages of planning for a community garden here. Funds would be used for gardening supplies, but primarily for a fence and gate that would go around the the garden beds that are being uh planned for right now. This is in a sunny corner of the park and um will seek to provide space for the nearby residents to learn about healthy eating and growing their own food. Next up is East Greenville Borough with an proposed upgrade to Beeler Park for a hundred and two thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars. This is an existing park in the borough that gets a lot of use from the densely populated neighborhoods that surround it. The funds will cover the costs of a new pavilion, a new walking path around the park, which you can sort of see in the gray on the screen, as well as additional landscaping and stormwater management, so. East Norton Township is uh proposing funds for the uh facility improvements that are going into Stanbridge Park uh with an ask of two hundred thousand dollars. This is for a a real major transformation of the park and this is the second phase of the project. Uh improvements included in this grant application are for retrofitting an existing gazebo, adding landscaping, extending the trails that go through the park, as well as installing a small solar carport in an adjacent parking lot. Green Lane Borough has applied for funds for pedestrian improvements along Route twenty nine, really just shy of where it intersects with Main Street or Route sixty three uh for a total ask of one hundred ninety nine thousand three hundred seventy five dollars. Uh so this includes sidewalks along gravel pipe to improve access to the downtown area as well as the very nearby Perkyum and Trail entrance. This includes also ADA ramps, a crosswalk at Walnut Street, minor drainage improvements and a retaining wall. Hat Borough, Borough uh has requested funds to provide lighting along a pedestrian trail that uh runs alongside the railroad tracks in the borough uh with a request for one hundred twenty five thousand three hundred dollars. This, these will be solar powered lights that run uh from the Septa Regional Rail Station to the nearby station park townhouse development. Uh this is a critical connection for the surrounding area and the solar lights will allow for riders and other nearby residents to use the walkway during off hours. Lansdale Borough has proposed funds for its White Road Park uh facility improvements for a total of ninety thousand eighty dollars. The borough is in the process of redeveloping this park, it's a significant borough amenity that serves other surrounding municipalities as well. Uh this particular phase of improvements includes the construction of a new pavilion, ADA accessible pathways and the construction of a new environmentally friendly restroom. Limerick Township is proposing a small extension to this existing Pico Trail that you can see on the screen. The trail that goes from Limerick Road uh crosses over Lewis Road and what they are proposing to build here uh for a proposed ask of sixty thousand dollars is this the small red extension on the left of the screen. Uh this will um extend the project out to Limerick Sector Road. This is going to, this is a multi-use hard surface trail designed to be ADA compliant. And um brings, this extension brings the trail out to a logical endpoint. Lower Gwinnett Township is proposing uh an updated trail crossing at Dager Road at the Pendleton Pike Trail. This is a proposed ask of sixty one thousand four hundred dollars. This will realign an existing trail crossing uh at Dager Road to pave the trail approaches and install updated trail crossing signage as well as pavement markings. This will meet current ADA, PENDOT and other applicable design standards. Lower Morland Township is proposing um a sidewalk extension along Lower Welsh Road with a proposed ask of forty eight thousand ninety nine dollars. Um this will install about one hundred seventy five feet of sidewalk along Lower Welsh Road to to fix a missing sidewalk connection uh that you see here in yellow, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it connects this existing neighborhood up here through this pathway that runs down to Lower Welsh Road, which will allow a a lot of nearby residents to walk to the Bethair's train station as well as the nearby commercial areas. Lower Selphur Township has a proposed ask of one hundred twelve thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars for the Alderford Road and Park Avenue basins project. Uh this will retrofit two stormwater facilities to provide water quality benefits by reducing sediment and nutrient loads to an adjacent stream. The area will be naturalized with native meadow grasses, flowers and plants to create a natural landscape and provide for evapotranspiration and infiltration. Uh educational signage will also be included to give nearby residents information about the improvement's positive effect on the local ecosystem. Marlborough Township has partnered with the Perkyum and Watership Conservancy with a grant request of sixty thousand dollars to construct an access area and boat ramp on the Perkyum and Creek. This will include a parking area, turnaround, boat launch and a stormwater basin planted with native species, giving nearby residents access to the Perkyum and Creek Water Trail and tie all of this back into the land-based Perkyum and Trail. Uh the municipality of Norristown submitted uh a request for thirty two thousand dollars to cover costs of an expanded scope of a previously submitted and approved project to provide a promenade along the Sawmill Run uh River Culver. These additional funds will pay for a crosswalk and decorative fencing along the canal to better tie into the Skooko River Trail. Fox Town has a big project here, uh the replacement of a bridge in Memorial Park as well as stream bank restoration. What you see here on the left is a bridge that was destroyed during some unanticipated heavy storms a couple of years back. Uh these funds, uh an an ask of two hundred thousand dollars will restore this pedestrian connection within the park. And the bridge will be replaced and enhanced with the incorporation of best practices for reducing debris buildup in the future. Royersford Borough uh has proposed a enhanced crosswalk at the intersection of Second and Arch with an ask of fifty four thousand two hundred eighty dollars uh at this crosswalk, which you see here um in the photo. The, the borough is proposing to install a flashing beacon and audible alerts on both sides of Second Avenue as well as update the current crosswalks to improve pedestrian visibility and safety. Skippeck Township is proposing a stepping stone project at Lennox Park with a proposed ask of sixty four thousand dollars. This is an example of what the project will look like when it's completed, it has uh these precast concrete stones that will be placed here on the Perkyum and Creek to allow for um off-road crossing from the Lennox Park to the the county-owned penny packer mills. Springfield Township is proposing a walkway along Walnut Avenue with a proposed ask of two hundred thousand dollars. Uh this project will enhance pedestrian safety along Walnut Avenue, increase walking trail access and opportunities and provide a viable connection between the Sandy Run Park and the planned recreational and open space at the township-owned property at seventeen twenty five Walnut Avenue. Upper Dublin Township has a second phase project submission for Twining Valley Park uh with a proposed ask of two hundred thousand dollars. Upper Dublin is going to install here uh at this former golf course, a pump track and uh bike park for uh people to come and use uh with uh their families and and other bicyclists. Upper Gwinnett Township has proposed assorted pedestrian improvements across the township with a proposed ask of ninety eight thousand seven hundred four dollars. This will include the installation of new illuminated pedestrian signage at a series of intersections throughout the township to address traffic calming and pedestrian safety. So this includes flashing stop signs, flashing crosswalk signs with push button activation as well as eight ADA curb ramps and crosswalk lines directing. Upper Morland Township uh with a proposed ask of a hundred thousand dollars is looking to renovate uh three historic buildings in their harm, their Farmstead Park. These renovations will help to create a safe and structurally sound community destination. Uh this funding specifically will be used to restore four chimney stacks in the park's farmhouse, carriage house and spring house. Upper Providence Township is proposing Perkyum and Trail Crossing improvements at Arcola and Cider Mill Roads uh for a proposed ask of twenty nine thousand two hundred ninety dollars. Uh this will improve safety for these two trail crossings by clearing vegetation, installing new trail signage and placing pavement markings on the roadway approaches to the trail crossings. Upper Selphur Township uh is uh continuing with its Park to Perkyum and Trail Connector project with a proposed ask of a hundred fifty Upper Selfer Township is continuing with its Park to Perkyum and Trail Connector project with a proposed ask of $150,000. This is a new 1.1 mile trail connection that will link the Township's flagship park. With Spring Mountain Adventure Recreation Area and the Perkyum and Trail. Work funded by this grant will include ADA-compatible trail construction, a PENDOT road crossing, trail signage. And stormwater management features. Whitpain Township has requested funding to work on a extension to their trail along the Pico Corridor. With a proposed ask of $196,300. This will be a three-quarter mile section of trail that will consist of an eight-foot wide asphalt trail. In addition to another stepping stone creek project. When completed, this Pico Trail will provide a trail connection to adjoining townships, neighborhoods and to other regional trails. And last but not least, West Hester Township is proposing improvements at Mount Kirk Park. With a proposed ask of $150,000. This will add to and improve the existing park amenities here. With benches, landscaping, a new pavilion and other infrastructure. Including paving the stone driveway and parking lot that you see here in this photo. This park is located between two large multifamily communities. One with direct access by a connected walking trail and is a significant recreational amenity for other suburban neighborhoods. Thank you so much for listening to this presentation this morning and Lex dot I too, I'm excited about the prospects of all of these. Grant projects in the future. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Loveguburger, thank you for that. Let me get a motion on the floor here. I will move that the proper county officials in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Are hereby authorized to enter into grant agreements with appropriate municipal officials. To fund the programs listed on the attached exhibits under the conditions specified for each grant. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Well, first of all, let me just say thank you for that. That is one impressive group of projects. Just want to thank not only our staff, but all of the board members that. Took the time to go through all of these grants and assess them and. I hope people can see what a wide range of projects these 2040 grants are able to fund. It's, it's really exciting, I think, to. Move these projects along. Many of these are projects that, well, all of these projects are ones that the local municipality. Wants to pursue, but just doesn't quite have the full funding themselves to get the job done. And so we're able to come in and. Provide those final dollars to make these really important and locally desired projects come to fruition. And I also just want to pick up on something that I think both Scott and Ann mentioned that. When a grant isn't accepted for funding in a given year. Our team works with the individuals that are the municipality that submitted that grant and works to improve it. For a subsequent submission and many, many times the grants that we fund are brought back on their second, second try. And in, in much better shape or a little further along and ready to go. So I just want to commend you all for that work. You know, this isn't just about one-offs. It's about building capacity within our municipalities to bring these kinds of projects forward. And I think it's just a, just a terrific outcome all the way around and I will be a yes vote on this. So Commissioner Lawrence, any comments?
I will absolutely be a yes vote. Scott and Ann, thank you for a tremendous presentation. This is one of the most impressive groups of projects I've seen since I've been a commissioner. I want to congratulate all the municipalities who are going to receive funding today. And I see that Jennifer and Erin are still on for Ambler, so go Ambler in particular, and thank you for being here this morning.
Mr. Gale, any comments?
Yes, Scott and Ann, I'd also like to thank you for all your hard work leading up to this point. Clearly, this was a huge time commitment. It took several months to get to this point in time. And I know all the folks in the planning commission and the review committee looked at each application and. Valuated the merits and as they always do, and I'm glad that this is coming together so well. Thank you both.
All right, hearing no additional comments, we will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that work. All right, Mr. Stein, approval to waive the 2020 property taxes at 310 Depot Street.
Yes, thank you. Before you, it's a request from Concilio Pentocostos Sandado Las Eras Internacionales. An organization that bought 310 Depot Street in the borough of Bridgeport back on August 1st, 2019 intending. And they did convert that into a church. The purchase was done just one day after the deadline to apply to waive taxes. Of, of real estate property taxes for 2020, which they are entitled to as a church. They did get that exemption moving forward, however. They were required to pay taxes for the 2020 tax year. They are requesting to us and municipality in the school district to allow those taxes to be waived. And I believe all parties are in agreement.
Okay, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Are hereby authorized to waive and abate the collection of the county real estate taxes due for the property at 310 Depot Street, Bridgeport, Pennsylvania. For the period of January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2020, including any interest and penalties. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stein. Next, we have an appointment to the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. I will move that Mr. Robert Hart be appointed to the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. For a term to begin immediately and to expire on May the 20th, 2025. And to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, a commissioner's appointment and reappointment to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board. I will move that Kelly Canali Brown be appointed as a community representative. And Kyle Longacre be reappointed as a local educational representative. To the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board to serve a term that begins immediately and expires on May the 20th, 2024. And to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. O'Malley, advertisements of bids.
Yes, number one, there's a bid on behalf of public safety for demolition services. The successful bidder will provide demolition and removal of the radio tower at the emergency operating center in Eagleville. Contact will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for construction services. The successful bidder will provide the replacement of Montgomery County Bridge 166 Swamp Pike in New Hanover Township. Contact will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. All bids and RFPs are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montaco PA.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding requests for the advertisement of bids. As described by the deputy chief operating officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley. And to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract, Ms. O'Malley.
Number one, contract award, information and technology solutions, equipment, CDW Government Incorporated of Chicago, Illinois. $25,593. Contract provides for 19 laptops with docking stations and support for the Commerce Department. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award, public safety equipment, CDW Government Incorporated of Chicago, Illinois. $109,290. Contract provides additional sequel licensing for the proper setup and implementation of the new on-call CAD servers. Equipment is available through a Sourcewell Cooperative contract. Three, contract award, assets and infrastructure services, John Milner Architects Incorporated of Chatsport, PA. $64,290. Contract provides a historic support structure report for Potts Grove Manor. RFP 2116 was viewed by 2046 providers with six responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated firm. Four, contract award voter services software, Easy Vote Solutions Incorporated of Woodstock, Georgia. $47,040. Contract provides for poll worker management software system. RFP 2107 was viewed by 22 providers with four responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated firm. Contract term is two years with eight annual renewals. Five, contract award, health and human services meal providers, various providers, $2,313,600 annually. Contract provides for home-delivered meal providers for the Office of Senior Services. RFP 2114 was viewed by 40 providers with 10 responses received. Contract is awarded to the providers that meet the county requirements. Contract is for three years, 7/1/2021 through 6/30/2024 with two additional one-year terms. Providers are Boyertown Area Multi-Service Incorporated, Colonial Neighborhood Council, Family Services of Montgomery County. Generations of Indian Valley, Moms Meals, Montco Sack, the Open Link and the YWCA Tri-County. Six, contract renewal purchasing, liquid fuel, petroleum traders corporation of Fort Wayne, Indiana, $175,000. Original solicitation was issued by Bucks County on behalf of the Southeastern PA County's Cooperative Purchasing Board. Contract provides heating oil, diesel fuel and gasoline for countywide use. This is the second of two available optional annual renewal terms. Contract is valid 7/1/2021 through 6/30/2022. Fuel prices are based on actual net acquisition cost of fuel, inclusive of all rebates and discounts. But cannot exceed the average daily price index on the day of delivery. Seven, contract amendment, assets and infrastructure engineering, traffic planning and design incorporated of Pottstown, PA. $94,789.35. Contract provides engineering design services for County Bridge 190. Also known as Kyne Street, which carries over the Schuylkill River from Pottstown Borough to North Coventry Township in Chester County. Amendment provides profile revisions to accommodate an adjacent PENDOT project as well as to design lighting for the proposed bridge. Eight, three contracts and four amendments for health and human services. The providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move. To approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the deputy chief operating officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley. And to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing now, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is awards of contract for emergency procurement. Ms. O'Malley.
Yes, these contracts provide various goods and services required for response to the COVID-19 pandemic. One, response services, health and human services, printing and mailing services, NPC Incorporated of Clayesburg, Pennsylvania. $138,762.2. Contract provides printing and mailing of vaccine information postcards to Montgomery County residents. Two, response services, health and human services, contact tracing, multiple providers. Contracts provide for contact tracing services in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. This is the second of three optional six-month renewal terms. Providers are Acclamo of Norristown, PA, Family Services of Montgomery County of Eagleville, PA, BNA Community Services of Addington, PA.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the deputy chief operating officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley. And to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing then, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing then, motion carries. Next, awards of contract for the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force.
Yes, number one, contract award, equipment, Plate Logic LLC of Downingtown, PA, $30,088. Contract provides fixed automatic license plate readers for Bucks County Police Departments. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award, equipment, Plate Logic LLC of Downingtown, PA, $31,215. Contract provides fixed automatic license plate readers for Chester County Police Departments. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract award, equipment, El Segue North America of Greensboro, North Carolina, $37,440. Contract provides automatic license plate readers for Montgomery and Delaware County Police Departments. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Four, contract amendment, equipment, Lawman Supply Company of New Jersey Incorporated of Pensacola, New Jersey, $641.94. Contract updates the sizes of 23 ballistic vests for Montgomery County.
All right, thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force. As described by the deputy chief operating officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley. And to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing now, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing then, motion carries. Are there any closing commissioner comments? Okay, then I will announce that our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be June the 3rd, 2021. That meeting will be held in person in one Montgomery place, Montgomery Plaza. But we will continue to have a Zoom option for anyone who wishes to simply watch the meeting by that way. Or who wishes to give public comment without having to physically come to the court, the county courthouse. And again, that will be on June the 3rd. And with that, I will move to adjourn the May 20th, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing now, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing then, motion carries and we will convene salary board. I know Ms. Pardew is here and I see Controller Sanchez. Good morning to both of you.
Morning.
We will start with public comment on salary board. Ms. Francisco, is there any public comment for salary board?
We do have one person with their hand raised, yes.
Okay, proceed please. And just as a reminder, the rules read by Mr. Stein earlier in the meeting apply for public comment during salary board as well.
We will now go to Laura Layman. You are now unmuted.
Oh yes, I would like to protest the salaries of those. Stephen Klein, Chair of the Planning Commission, Michael Narkowicz, our Abington Township Planner. I would like to protest that those salaries are being paid without any supervision. Over the work that they're producing or over the qualifications that they may not have for the job. And I would like to protest the salaries of anyone who is in charge of overseeing those things. And leaves them in that condition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
No, that concludes our public comment.
All right, thank you. Then is there a, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pardew, go right ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, members of salary board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, May 19th, 2021 with a timestamp of 9:43 a.m. Of note, we have four retirees, Karen Killen from Domestic Relations after 20 years. Oh, I'm sorry, we have five retirees, Patricia Golden from Developmental Disabilities after 15 years. Karen Killen from Domestic Relations after 20 years. Josephine D'Amico from Human Resources after 25 years. Yogi Suqua from Human Resources after four years. And Anne Vinesia from the Prothonitary after 10 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for salary board consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Pardew. Is there a motion to approve the May 20th, 2021 salary board presentation is given by Director of Human Resources? Ms. Donna Pardew and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same.
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Right, hearing then, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing then, motion carries. And Ms. Pardew, I know we, I know we have someone who is more than 25 years with us that you will be acknowledging today.
Yes, thank you. I don't know that Josephine will be watching this today because she said she was gonna cry. And I may as well, so I'm sorry. Josephine started her career with Montgomery County in 1995 and I have personally worked with her for the past nine years. She knows benefit administration inside and out and has always approached her job with a professionalism, with professionalism and compassion, and has assisted employees and sometimes their families through very difficult, sometimes tragic points in their lives. Josephine always has a smile and a kind word and a funny story and has been an invaluable asset to the Department of Human Resources and the employees of Montgomery County and will be missed by everyone who has had the privilege to know her. So, on behalf of her colleagues in Human Resources, I would like to wish Josephine a retirement filled with fun, happiness, family, and friends, and especially her favorite friends, her four-legged furry ones. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Pardue. Well, I certainly hope that you're watching, Josephine. Thank you for that incredible service to our county. There's a tremendous amount of service represented by the individuals that are retiring today, and we want to thank each and every one of them. And thank you for highlighting her incredible work for all these twenty-five years.
Thank you.
Any other comments by the, any of the members?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate all the retirees, but I do have to acknowledge Josephine, who's not only one of my favorite people in county government, but one of my favorite people in the world. I never saw Josephine without smiling. She never stopped commenting how tall I was. But, you know, Josephine, I hope you're watching. I hope I get to see you. Congratulations. Thank you for all the work that you've done over the years and Godspeed.
I just want to also congratulate Josephine and the rest of the retirees, but I know our department works very closely with Josephine, and we're wishing her wonderful retirement, but we definitely are sad to see her go. So thank you.
Great, all right. Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you all for that. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn the May twentieth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing now, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.